Very good.
That is, oh, okay, young lady, I know she wants a coffee.
She wants a coffee.
Thank you.
Oh, pretty good.
That's a plate, that's this?
I think so, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. Do everything.
Okay. I give them the captain, um, which, Heather. Yes. Heather. And the bridge hasn't got, you've got, I've got one long here, because I'm too sure of that. Okay. Okay. This was the lower section of the cemetery.
Where are you at?
That's every one of the roads.
Um.
Okay?
It's all more for.
How the length is.
Well, true.
And how bad the shape they are. Here is. Every road, it says run in between them, worst running, medium run.
Before we cross.
Yes.
Catherine?
Again. I have everything there.
The Godfather of the.
There's some.
The Godfather of the. Uh.
Pressure's on me now.
What's that?
The pressure's on me now.
Are you done? Yeah, this way.
Good evening, all, thank you, and, uh, welcome to the two twenty twenty-three preliminary budget discussion workshop. So let's start the meeting, uh, if you could all join me by standing in line, saying the five relations.
Five relations, unified, united States of America, to you all, for your standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated, just us for all.
All right, thank very much. A brief moment, please. All right, very well, thank you all very much. So let's, uh, get right into it to start, we have a presentation, uh, about town audit, Mr. Bill Hall, RHR Smith and Company, and he will discuss and review the audit for period ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. So, Mr. Hall, if you would please, the floor is yours.
All right, thanks, sir. Evening, everyone. Um, I think most of you are familiar with me, I've been doing the audit up here for, quite a long time, um, I'm just gonna go through some, uh, key pages, key components, key numbers. Anytime you have any questions, feel free to stop me and ask. Um, as I say every year, the most important page in this document are pages one through four, that's where we form our audit, uh, opinion, and that's why twenty-one, you have an unqualified opinion. There's three types of opinion, unqualified, qualified, and adverse. If you want opinion, you'd want an unqualified opinion, it usually means that you don't have any qualifying factors, and that the information provided and presented is in performance with GASB and all the standards that acquire us to, um, to do the audit. Um, after that, pages five through about, let's see for you, it's, your NVNA is large. But twenty-one is called the NVNA, the Management Discussion Analysis. Um, and you'll notice that right down at the top of that first page five, it does say unaudited. The reason for that is, is this is the only part of the document that management can put information in, for graphs, you know, whatever they pretty much wanna do, this is the only pages that can be done, and hence why it's unaudited. Um, you know, a lot of the figures that are in there, when you look at like table one, table two, table three, table four, are usually figures that are drawn up from the fact statements and are audited, but in overall, the NVNA, the Management Discussion Analysis, is unaudited. I'm gonna go to statement C, which for you is on page twenty-six. So do remember, anytime on this document that we're talking about balance sheet accounts, which are your assets, your liabilities, and your equities, that snapshot on that day, Ju-, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, when we're talking about revenues and expenses, it's a snapshot of the whole fiscal year from January to December. So at, at June thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, you had any general fund total assets of seven point three million dollars. Um, most of that make it, uh, is cash and investments of about, uh, six point two, almost six point three million total, some AR from taxes, liens, and then some other AR also. You had liabilities of about one point eight million, uh, most of that really is the due to do froms. Let me explain what a due to do from is. So in governmental accounting nowadays, instead of having cash accounts for little pots of money for everything that you have, um, a due to do from is created, and what that does is, that means that your, the general fund cash that you're, that's shown on that page, houses money that belongs to other funds, and the due to do from is used to track the activity from the cash account and all these other funds. And we'll notice that, you'll notice on this page, you see the, um, the hot, the heading other governmental funds. There are many pots of money in the town of, of Pittsfield, and what you'll notice is that at the end of this document, we actually break down all of these other governmental funds in special revenues, capital projects, and trust funds, and, and when we get to there, I'll go over it a little bit on, on what that breakdown is, but a due to do from is just the act, it's, it's the, it's used to track the activity in your cash account that's pertaining to these other funds. You'll also notice you have some deferred inflows of resources, which were your prepaid taxes, you need deferred tax revenues, leaving your fund equity or your fund balance, so you have a total fund balance of four point eight million, of that, two hundred and two thousand is restricted, committed is two point two million, assigned is a hundred and fifty, leaving you unassigned fund balance of two point three million dollars. Now, you can find out what those restrictions you committed and assigned out, they're in the notes of the financial statements, I believe, note eight or nine, so both, note twelve, um, I'll brie-, I'll believe you touch over those when I go over the notes. I'm just gonna briefly explain to you what fund balances are. So non-spendable fund balance would be usually two things, tax-acquired property or prepaid expense, because technically it's already been expended, so you can't spend it again. Um, restricted fund balances would be something from the federal government or the state government that can, has to be used for a certain purpose. Um, committed fund balance would be something that the town vote is approved, assigned fund balance would be something you approve, and then unassigned is the catch-all, okay? Unassigned fund balance usually has a couple purposes, one, cash flow, the other one is budgeting tools. You can use your unassigned fund balance to, um, to, to keep a tax rate at a certain level, um, instead of having, if you didn't have any fund balance, you'd have to base up all your increases, um, from one year to the next, all based on usually, um, taxes. Uh, two pages down from that, which would be statement E, on page twenty-eight, these are your revenues and expenses for your general funds for FY twenty-one, your general fund took in eight point four million dollars, most of that being taxes and intergovernmental revenues, intergovernmental revenues would probably be state revenue sharing, homestead and things like that, and again, I do believe there's a schedule towards the back that will actually break that down further, and I'll touch on that. Um, your expenses were about seven point nine million dollars, so you'll notice that the, you see that excess revenue, so your, your revenues were above your expenses by five hundred and five thousand, and then you had some transfers in and transfers out of a net of ninety-five thousand, showing that your fund balance went up four hundred and nine thousand dollars from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. And a lot of those transfers are probably transfers to some of your reserve accounts or, or money being transferred into your general fund for purposes of expenditures in your general fund. And again, what you'll notice is that, you know, if you look over the old governmental funds two over, you see those numbers also, in the back, it'll be broken down by each fund that the town of Pittsfield actually has.
Bill?
Yep.
May I ask a quick question? Uh, going back to, uh, your statement C and your judgment statement D, uh, the non, non-spendable restricted committed assigned and unassigned fund balances, and the increase in statement E of, of another four hundred and nine thousand.
Yes, sir.
To the fund balance, is that reasonable for our budget, for the town of Pittsfield, for our income and, uh?
So without looking at the page, I wouldn't know, what's your, uh, what's your total budget? Including school and county tax?
I don't know nothing at all.
Yeah, okay, I can, I can, I'll say, I'm gonna go to schedule one. Schedule one, so it looks like it's about eight, a little over, about, about eight and a half million, four hundred thousand dollars, sure, I mean, that's pretty good.
So the, in statement C, though, the fund balance is there, is that reasonable, what we're looking at, two point three million unassigned fund balance?
So the good thing about being a town is that there's no state or federal, uh, guidelines or restrictions on how much unassigned fund balance you can have, which is good. Um, u-usually, uh, at our adjustment company, we recommend that you have between, uh, sixty and ninety days of operating funds, so if you take your eight point five million divided by twelve, that's what's, seven hundred thousand dollars times three, so about two million dollars, so yeah, you know, you're right around where we'd want you to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and you know, and a good thing, and I'll bring this up when I, when I go forward, is, is I always like to see the towns that I do have reserve accounts, you know, have reserve for roads or equipment or, or whatever, you know, just to pull that money out of your general fund and have a nice reserve, so when you're, when you're doing projects or you're buying equipment, you're not doing that out of your general fund, you're doing it out of a reserve account, and that's how proper accounting and governmental it is. And you guys actually have a pretty good reserve account, but we'll get into that when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, after that, you know, I like to talk about, um, your proprietary funds, which are on pages thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. So the town of, of, of Pittsfield has two enterprise funds, and they just happen to be the, the toughest proprietary slash enterprise funds that I normally deal with, and that's just sewer and water. Um, sewer and water is almost exactly like having another general fund, so really, you know, you have three major funds, you know, that, that take a lot of work and it take a lot of accounting to do. You know, sewer and water departments are, are, you know, they, they are presented as like a for-profit, hence why they're called proprietary funds, proprietary funds are considered for like a normal business, you'll notice that the difference between like this statement and statement C is that long-term information like capital assets and debt, bonds payable, capital leases are shown on proprietary funds, um, hence why they take a little bit more accounting practices, having a more accounting knowledge when you start dealing with water and sewer funds. And you'll notice that at the end of the year, you're, and again, the terminology is a little different, too, when I, when I talked about statement C, I talked about fund balance, when you talk about proprietary funds, you talk about net assets, and your total net assets for your sewer department at the end of, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one was three point three million dollars. Most of that is tied up in your investment capital assets, you also have some restricted fund balances for both of these, and I think most of them are like your restoration funds and stuff like that, and again, those will be more explained in the notes, um, so your unrestricted is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then it's actually in the negative in the water department. Now, now, if you were to, you asked me that question about fund balance for the general fund, and it's in a good spot, healthy, it's not, um, odd or indifferent to see water and sewer funds, unrestricted funds, to be in the negative, it's just not, because they, a lot of sewer funds and water funds don't operate on a net income basis, they just, every year, you know, you bill out for what the water usage is, you, you have the expenses, you got a lot of, a lot of infrastructure needs and whatnot, so it's not, it's not a bad thing to see a negative or low unrestricted, it's not a great thing either, but it's, it's not something that's detrimental to your financial statements. And on, so on, on that page, uh, thirty was your balance sheet, on page thirty-one is your revenues and expenses for the two, uh, enterprise slash proprietary funds. Um, you know, something that I, that I see at a lot of towns that do house water and sewer, is that usually the town will appropriate money for a water and sewer department, you know, the town of Pittsfield doesn't do that, hence why you probably have a very low unrestricted fund balance, or net assets, sorry. Um, and then on E, on, uh, page, the next one, thirty-two, that's just a, um, just a kind of like a, a cash, we have to actually tie what your, your cash counted out as and what it ended as, and kind of explain why your cash number down.
So any question, Bill?
Sure.
Statement H, so it shows a net income, or the operating income and a loss of sixty-four thousand, what is that, help me understand that, like, does that get subsidized by the general fund, or?
Nope, 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 the enterprise funds are solely, uh, uh, all standalone funds, um, what, what normally happens is that the unrestricted will go up and down, now do remember, though, pertaining to your water and sewer, you know, they don't, they, they don't pay their own bills, it, you know, it comes out of the cash account associated with the general fund that we talked about, you know, you run one warrant, and in that warrant, you pay, you know, general fund, water, sewer, you know, revolving loan, everything kind of comes out of there. So, so, you know, does the town supplement the bills of the sewer and water? Sure, probably, there's times during the year when, when billing is, you know, done for the water and sewer, and maybe that the cash balance of the general fund is, is floating alone between the water and sewer, um, but again, seeing a water and sewer fund having a net income is not something, uh, you know, it, it happens, it probably happens more than it should, um, you know, water and sewer funds, I, I wouldn't say are, are the best self-sufficient proprietary funds, but having a net loss one year of fifty-seven thousand and sixty-seven thousand, you know, it, it's, it's, uh, not common, but it, it happens a lot, and you'll notice, and you'll notice, you'll notice, you see on your expense line where you have that depreciation?
Yeah.
That's pretty much causing you to have a, a net income or a net loss, because how a proprietary fund works?
Right.
Is, you know, when you, when you buy infrastructure or buy equipment, it's not counted as an expense.
Right.
It's only counted as expense as it gets depreciated.
So what's depreciation on sewer and water, is it thirty years or twenty years?
Depends on what you purchase, if it's like infrastructure, you know, lines and stuff, it's probably twenty-five to thirty years, but if it's, if it's equipment, depending on the equipment, you know, if it's a truck, probably ten, um, some other equipment can be five years old, um, I don't know if sewer and water has, uh, has computers, but those are three years old, so it, it ranges anywhere from three to thirty, depending on what it is.
All right, so depreciation's on cash, but still showing the value of what we have, right?
Absolutely correct, absolutely correct, you know, and, and it's, it's, you know, GASB sixty-eight, and GASB is the governmental accounting standards board, they're like the overseers of how governmental accounting is supposed to happen, um, you know, sixty-eight is when, I think it's about twenty years now, is when they implemented that governmental units needed to stop tracking and implementing fixed assets into their financial statements.
Right.
You know, if you looked at your financial statement from nineteen ninety, I bet it's fifty pages, fifty pages, and here we are, twenty-five years later, and we've doubled the pages, because every couple two to three to five years, GASB comes out with a new proclamation, is what I call it, and it, it adds work on administration and on the others. So, I mean, it's, it's a good thing to have, to, to show you what your fixed assets are, where the depreciation level is, you know, because, you know, something that's, was hardly never tracked in, in the past, that's now being tracked, you know, is infrastructure, because it does cost money to replace lines or replace vehicles or replace that kind of information, and every year, what I do is, is I give, uh, Catherine a current listing of everything she has for fixed assets, she goes through it, lets me know if there's any changes to that list, and then she gives me anything that was added in FY, whatever fiscal year we're working on.
Okay, so is there a fix, is there a fixed asset list part of the audit, or no?
Yes, yes.
There is?
Yeah, yeah, there sure is, and yours is pretty long.
Has it been in the back of the?
Oh, it's, oh, it's not in the audit, no, it's not actually, yeah, it's something that we, we get to her, that comes from a database that we create, and then she manages it, and we manage it, and, and whatnot, if there's something, if, if you're looking for a fixed asset database, let Catherine know, and I can have it, uh, emailed to her, and she can give it to you.
Yeah, we have that printed off for the next budget workshop.
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea, you know, fixed asset list, good thing to look over, review and.
I think it's a great thing, especially for budgeting purposes, because you'll know, you know, if you got, you've got lines, and, or if you got roads, or you got equipment that's getting older, we'll tell you if it is or not.
Like the ninth one, third degree.
Yeah.
Oh, that's still good. Probably not on the fixed asset list.
It's probably on there, but I guess, I can't facefully appreciate it.
I would assume you would have that for all the departments.
Every single department in the town. Every single department.
And we keep the inventory list, which is mostly fixed assets, but there's a few items that aren't on it, just by the way the insurance is done versus the fixed assets.
Right, absolutely correct.
Could we?
Fixed assets is way more thorough than like your insurance policies and stuff, we maintain pretty much anything that's above five thousand dollars.
Could we make the standard requested list for all town departments?
Yes, they're, they're all together.
They'll all be there, yeah.
Fixed asset list.
Yeah, we'll send it to her ourselves, so you can, she can actually sort it and do whatever she needs to do.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Yeah, just send me an email, Catherine, okay?
Yeah, there you go.
Um, so, in theory, the water and sewer are supposed to operate on its own, so when it doesn't, we're borrowing from another fund that taxpayers put into?
Usually.
But only if, there's only like two-thirds of the town that actually have water and sewer, the other third are on well, so you're borrowing money from taxpayers to pay for something that's supposed to be self-sufficient?
Correct, correct, and, and, and that's what proprietary fund is, it's supposed to be self-sufficient, however, like I said, if you go back to the page prior, um, which is thirty, both of those funds do have a net asset, okay? You see the three point three million at the bottom for the sewer, the two point nine million for the water, so it, it does have its own sustainability, the problem being, though, that the unrestricted, which is pretty much the, the operating of it, the water's negative by fifteen thousand, but your sewer has a hundred and eighty-one thousand, an unrestricted net asset, because the, the, the net, the, the net investment capital asset is pretty much all your, the va-, the net value of your fixed assets for each one. The restricted amount is, and then we'll go on to where we get to your notes, is like, all, all the is the restoration, I, I don't know what they all are, but I know you, for each one of these funds, you have two restricted, um, net positions for each one of these. So the net, the, when we talk about, you know, is one of these funds dipping into the general fund, I would look at the unrestricted net, net position, where the sewer's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, meaning that it has, in its bank, it has about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of money that's not tied up, while the water is actually in the negative by fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, meaning that there's probably fifteen thousand dollars on, on this specific day that it's had to borrow from the general fund to pay some of its bills.
Well, what you're saying is that basically the depreciation of the system, that's what causes it to have a negative net income?
Absolutely correct, yeah, well, I mean, depreciate it right, correct.
All right, what's the depreciation?
Until we hear the depreciation, this never happened, I think it's happened twice since then, but it gets caught up, and because we don't have regular increases in the water rate, um, we talked about not waiting ten or twelve years and having an increase, which we did in twenty twenty-one, um, to catch this up, but to look at this every two to three years.
Yeah, I mean, pay attention to the rates for sewer and water are very important, I don't disagree with that, Sam.
You had mentioned that some towns will put money into this and we don't.
Correct.
Is that a recommendation that you?
So it, so it depends on, on, on the purpose of why you're funding it, so a lot of times I see, you know, a town funding, um, the sewer and water because they have debt associated with it, um, and, and they'll appropriate the debt in the general fund and then transfer it to the water sewer to cover the debt payments, because a lot of times sewer and water don't have enough flow of cash to, to make the debt payments.
Like, as you do major projects and things, and those are the debts you might speak of, because we're about to do that ourselves.
Yeah, so and, and if you are thinking about doing a, a water or, or sewer project that's gonna be associated with debt, you may want to start thinking about, you know, appropriating money for that project out of taxation, yeah, because the water and sewer probably won't be able to make those, you know, dollar payments every year to, uh, to supplement the payments that are gonna have to be made out of the water, you know, for the, for the, for the bond, and that's very common, very common. Page thirty-three is where your notes start, and, and in these notes, you'll notice that, and I didn't bring this up when I was looking at like statement C, or D, or E, at the bottom that says C accompanying notes, a lot of times the figures that are in those statements or schedules are just one large figure, the notes in the financial statements will actually break down that information more. One thing I'll say about note one, if you ever do decide that you wanna read this document, start with note one, it gives you terminology, description of what, uh, fund balances are, and, uh, whatever they mean in this document. Note two, which is, uh, starts on page forty-five, and I'm just gonna blow through these, if you have a question, let me know. So note two is just a, is, uh, we have to disclose, you know, where your cash is, whether or not it's in checking accounts, savings accounts, you know, repurchase agreements, and any investments that you have, and what they're invested in, and, and what their terms are, whether or not your money's collateralized or not, so that goes to forty-seven. Um, and we talked about the due to do froms, which is on note three, uh, note four is your income fund transfers, just shows that you transfer money from your general fund to and from other funds. Note five, again, here's a more breakdown of your capital assets on note five, it starts with your governmental funds, and then it breaks down to your, your business type funds, which is yours, water and sewer, and then this shows a depreciation also, that's on page forty-nine, and then you go to fifty, it's a more breakdown of your long-term debt, shows you what you have for, uh, bonds payable, any other notes and stuff, broken out between governmental and business type, so, you know, bringing up the question you just, uh, you talked about, Lindsay, you know, showing here, you guys do have some bonds associated with your water or your sewer, and you're, right now, you're currently, your taxpayers are not paying on that, you know, that's, that's not common when you talk about water and sewer, um, it's very uncommon, so, you know, that, that, that shows me that, you know, you might not have a lot of unrestricted balance, but at least your water and sewer are paying for its own bonds, you know, that's something, like I said, that doesn't happen very often. Um, and then it gets into a little bit more description, uh, what, what's outstanding for bonds and stuff on, on the bottom of fifty, it continues on fifty-one, then you know, fifty-two, actually, on fifty-two, as you went, it actually shows you by, um, principal and interest amounts on how much you pay for bonds, and notes every, uh, every year breaks it out all the way to the end of the, uh, term of the bonds in the notes. Note seven shows some other, um, long-term liabilities that you have, note eight just tells you about crew compensated expenses, so this is when we get back into what, uh, Mr. Chichet was talking about, um, back on statement C, note nine on page fifty-four is where we start to break down, to explain to you what your restricted net position and net fund balances are, uh, we break down each one to show you what the total is, and then after that, it goes to your committed fund balances on note ten, again, all broken down. Note eleven on the page after that is your sun fund balances, so, so again, the notes are used to take the information that's in the, um, schedules and statements and break it down further, so you can understand and, and know exactly what some of those figures are made up of. So I'm not gonna get into note thirteen, this is again, that, that note thirteen is the newest GASB proclamation that happened a few years ago, that, that we have to disclose pension liabilities and stuff, not something I usually talk about. Fourteen is the same thing, fifteen is, is more OPEP, which is other post-employment benefits. So I would like to go to schedule one, if I can get there, so if you go to page seventy-eight, so this is a budget to actual comparison, and it's in, and so this gives you a picture of what, how you budgeted and, and how it came in as, showing you whether or not you collected what you expected to collect, and what you collected, what you planned on expending, and, and a good thing that we do is, is if you go then a few more pages down, uh, to eighty-six, and I think it's, uh, let's see, pages eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, we take those figures that you see on that schedule C, and we break it down even further. So if you were to say like, well, you know, why is my general tax revenue at X, well, you go to that page eighty-six, and it breaks down each one, property taxes, vehicle excise taxes, you know, all the, all the taxes, intergovernmental revenues, you know, it shows, you know, we talked about, you know, back on statement E, where your taxes and your intergovernmental revenue are your most, you know, highest revenues that you collected, it actually breaks it down what they are, um, so, you know, we break the, everything all the way down to, and, and when we put this document together, when we build it, we actually start in the back of the document, you'll notice that in the back of the document, information's broken down by fund, by everything, and when you get up to the front, it's all kind of lump summed into, into categories, and like I said, eighty-seven and eighty-eight breaks your expenses down further, you know, if you had questions, if you're looking at, you know, the schedule one, and, you know, you know, why did I, uh, why did I have twelve thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars left in the classified? You can go in there and say, look, there's your overlay, you might have spent, you know, employee retirement, or spent write-offs in unclassified, but you saved some money in these other categories. So, again, we break it down as far as we possibly can to provide you guys with enough information for budgeting and financial purposes. Pages eighty-eight and eighty-nine, so remember how we talked about earlier, other governmental funds? So, this actually breaks it down a little bit further. You have two funds, special revenue and permanent funds, on pages, whoop, on pages eighty-nine and ninety, however, if you go just a few more pages, starting on page ninety-two, you'll notice from ninety-two to ninety, you guys got a lot of special revenue funds, to ninety, to one hundred, we break down every single fund, showing you the balance sheet side, and then if you were to look at pages one oh one till about one oh eight, we do the same thing for the revenues and expenses per fund. Hence why your audit report has gotten much larger, is we've taken everything, we've broken it down by fund. No other auditor that I've seen does it this way, let me tell you, it is so easier to do it this way. At first, it's a little bit of a, you know, work and whatnot, but at the end of the day, if I could sit here and I could pull out one fund and I could see the total balance sheet of that fund, and then the total revenues and expenses, it's so much easier for me to, especially for us. And it gives you guys tools to be able to look and see at the end of that fiscal year how much money was sitting in, you know, your economic development fund, or your innovative town TIF, or your Pittsfield Solar TIF, or your, you know, your GOS, your deposit correction snowmobiles, you know, it just breaks down everything. And then after the special revenues, you have the permanent funds, which for permanent funds here, you have about two pages of it, cemetery fund, your perpetual care fund, your floral fund, your cemetery capital improvement fund, you know, you have one, two, three, you have about eight permanent funds. And again, we break that down, so two pages of balance sheet, then two pages of revenues and expenses. And then after that, it's just another breakdown of your capital assets, and then the last two pages are just something that we are required to do because your sewer or water loan is through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and something that we have to, you know, we have to do a little document that says that they're in compliance with USDA rules and regulations on borrowing money. And that is your audit report, all one hundred and nineteen pages of it.
This says recreation has a positive amount of eighty-two hundred dollars?
What page you on, sir?
Ninety-three, seven?
Probably.
At that point?
That's the concession.
Absolutely correct, yeah, sure does.
You brought in eighty-two hundred dollars?
Well, it could be, it could be.
Absolutely correct, so if you went to the revenues and expense page for that, for the recreation? Oh, let's see.
It's being used to fund things like football that doesn't collect enough money, because it costs so much for you to equip it.
So, rep concessions last year actually had a net loss of seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
With all these special revenue account, in terms of like tracking and management of that, maybe so we have a lot relative to other towns that you see, is this about Om Haru, what everyone else is doing?
I mean, so, you know, Pittsfield, you know, you have, so first you have the water and sewer, which adds, you know, a whole new level of auditing and accounting in any school, in any town, sorry. You know, most towns don't have a water and sewer, you know, they have a general fund and they'll have funds, but, I mean, you do have, you know, quite a bit of special revenues, I mean, you know, ten to twelve pages of special revenues, that is a lot. You know, it's not a bad thing, it's not a bad thing, it's always good to have these pots of money for certain purposes.
Right.
You know, you do have, if you looked on page one oh two, you have those opera funds that came in last year, where you received two hundred eleven thousand dollars, you spent about twenty-five, so you still got about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, you have this, these other pots of money that you can use for purposes that the town deems fit, or the town council deems fit.
I was just wondering if that's the most efficient way, accounting-wise, for, from the management perspective, for the person having to manage all this?
So, sometimes it's required to put those in the separate funds, depending on what the purpose of the grant or whatever it is.
Right, so that probably is why we have gotten so many, because you have so many grant, grant that.
Absolutely, and it doesn't even have to be a restricted grant, it could just be, it could even be a local grant that they just want to separate, because, remember, a lot of times if you stick that, those kind of monies in the general fund, they get lost and they just go to unassigned fund balance.
Then you have to keep a separate front sheet.
Yeah, this gets all, yeah, so it's easier to do that.
Yeah, CASB changed governmental accounting about thirty, forty years ago, so they started doing fund accounting, because, you know, what they would do is, is they would have one fund, and then they would have fifty cash accounts, and those cash accounts were all these other funds where they, then they'd have to reconcile cash on a healthy basis for all those accounts, and that's all treasures we're doing, is just reconciling cash, they couldn't do anything else. So, that was a long time ago. You know, financially, town of Pittsfield's at a very good place, it's at a very good place, which is good to see. Now, there are towns out there that aren't a good place, and you're going out more of them, you've got, you know, you've got reserve accounts and stuff, you've got some, you know, some pots of money that you can use for other purposes, you know, your water and sewer, you know, as Catherine said, I think you guys were lacking a little bit on your sewer rates and water rates, but it sounds like you guys are cleaning that up a little bit too and whatnot. It's good to see that someone wants some fixed asset information, because, you know, budget time is a good time to look at what you guys need for infrastructure needs, so, sounds like everything's on the right path here, so that's good.
Good news, Bill, thank you very much. Any other questions, comments from the council?
So, I did want to note on the little management letter, that these were actually very minor items, which I appreciate, and have always been, since that first audit that I had to go through from the prior year, a long time ago. On the bank reconciliations, because the checks were getting lost in the mail, and people were finding the checks and then cashing them after, we avoided them out and everything, I kept some of the older ones off, they've kind of cleaned those all off now, because they would find them later on, or tone on their pockets or something.
Hey, I've seen.
The little sports ones and things like that.
I've seen what people hold on to a check, because it's like, you know, twenty-five cents, just to irritate the people that do the finances.
And the fixed assets, I did go back and check, these are from when we, during COVID, when we had trouble doing the audit, so I think we picked, had some things that, they weren't lost, but there was like two or three things that got picked up. And then I do agree, we need to start earlier, we started really early, but then we got delayed when people are sick and everything.
Yeah, COVID has hit the town of Pittsfield probably harder than other towns that I've had to deal with.
Why is that, you think?
You know, I don't know, you know, I, you know, I used to be able to come here in, you know, February, you know, usually mid-February, and I'd be up here probably for a whole week, you know, I'd be running up and downstairs to get information and whatnot, and, you know, usually we'd probably have the audit done, you know, April, maybe May at the latest, you know, the last couple of years, you know, COVID has decimated the financial people upstairs, and I haven't been able to go up and down, and, you know, poor Catherine, you know, she's had that boot on, she's had to come up and downstairs a lot, you know, delivering me stuff, it's, it's been a longer process over the last couple of years, you know, for the town of Pittsfield to be able to get an audited financial statement done. Why has it been more hard than other towns? It's hard to say, you know, I do, I do the town of Andover also, and I was supposed to start their audit last week, but then I get a call, you know, like the Friday before, saying I can't come up to the town, because like the whole town has COVID, because they just had their old homestay, and like everybody popped up with COVID, so, you know, that one's awful. You know, so unfortunately, COVID has caused some problems in some towns, it just seems like it's, last two years it's really hit this town and also the town of Andover pretty hard.
Which towns do you do an audit at? Andover, Pittsfield?
What other towns do I do?
Yeah.
Many.
Town of Wells, town of Caddybunk, town of Buxton, I just got done, I do a lot of schools, I go over Vermont a little bit, I have myself about sixty or seventy clients. Other towns in this area, I don't know how to think, what other towns? Guilford, Willimantic, City of Prescott Isle, who knows, there's so many, I can't even, I'd have to look at a list to name all my clients.
Yeah, it's not one or two, yeah.
Oh, I have, oh, yeah, I do a lot of towns, my expertise is schools, but I do a lot of towns, yeah.
So, quick question, very vague probably, but do you, is there anything you could offer to the town by our general practice, how do we handle documents or filing, anything that could make it easier for the town, for you, or in general, or is there any one thing that kind of stuck out? I mean, just for the practice?
So, you know, FYI, Catherine keeps immaculate records, if anything, you know, very duplicate of paper, she probably keeps paper companies in business. For me, that's not an issue, but, you know, she does keep it somewhat organized, she knows the organization, to me, when sometimes when I see her office, I kind of want to just like, holy, let's just throw a match and let's start over. But she does keep immaculate records, duplication will put maybe a little bit too much, but if it works for her, it works for her. Like I said, this town is, she has a, here you go, you ready? She needs help. You need someone upstairs that has some ability to understand accounting other than herself that can assist her in the audit, because that is something that has probably also slowed down the audit process the last couple of years, you have, you've had a couple of young ladies in there, and I can't remember their names, that have helped her over the years, but right now, I feel like she's probably alone upstairs when it comes to accounting.
You have like one person.
Who do you have now?
Kina.
Oh, okay.
And that has been another fallout of the pandemic, I'm sure, because something we've been dealing, this town's been dealing with for several years now.
Well, unfortunately, right now it's
Maybe longer.
Very hard to find qualified individuals, period, people do not want to work, so.
At one point, we were looking for every department.
So, it is, so COVID here and having a lack of accounting knowledge upstairs, I would say it was probably the two biggest obstacles the last two years.
Okay, all right, I appreciate your insight on that.
So, on the duplication of records, that's because I make a copy of everything for you, so we don't have to copy it later on.
But do remember, though, I am paperless, I don't need paper right now. Back in the day when I did, it was great, now I don't need it anymore.
I will never make a copy for you again.
Good point, we have discussed the possibility of being, you know, doing data entry, scanning documents, eventually, just getting it off top, that's how we at least start doing that, and start working out procedures over the next few years.
Let me tell you something.
Which is aggressive for this town.
I was very anti-going paperless, but now I love it.
Yeah.
Love it. So much easier to open up a computer and find a file than it is to bury through, you know.
I think it's great for everyone else, except me, I have to have.
Once you switch, you'll never look back.
Yeah, no, no, old dogs, no new tricks.
That's what I said, well, myself. I think everybody should go paperless, but then, you know, I also do like the town of J and some other towns that are still paper mills, and they hate me when I say that, if anything, so.
So, anything else, council? When you do this audit, you develop journal entries?
Yeah.
Is that how that works?
Yeah, absolutely correct, so what'll happen is, is, you know, I'll tell Catherine on a certain day, she needs to start giving me reports, and then anything from there on, you know, either she'll say, oh, I missed this, can we do a journal entry, or I'll find something that needs to be journal entry, and then after the, you know, scheduled and titled everything that needs to be tied out, I'll usually send Catherine adjustments, yeah. If you're going to ask me how many there were, I couldn't tell you off the top.
Lovely, not many.
Is it, that's not something we see?
Usually not, it's usually something I just send administration, and they put together, so, I can tell you how many there were, if you need to know, but I don't know.
So, that would be more of a declaration of the process, not the end result?
Um, I mean, sometimes it's a process, you know, depending, you know, listen, I have been to clients before where I've not had to give them a journal entry at all, you know, but I've also been to a client before where I've had to give a hundred journal entries. You know, let me see, I can tell you this pretty quickly.
So, how is the depreciation of the water sewer, when you look at the accrued time?
Journal entry, so last year, I gave her nine adjustments, so, for the size of town, that's not bad at all, and she's right, you know, depreciation, she wouldn't calculate anyway, so I'd have to give her depreciation for the water sewer, so that'd be two adjustments.
Okay.
Any others that I gave you? Oh, I had to defer tax revenue posting, that's common in towns, had to do a couple beginning balance adjustments, so, yeah, I mean, nothing major, the biggest dollar value was the depreciation, yeah. So, nine journal entries, not many at all, like I said, I've been to towns and I've had to do a hundred before, so.
Very good. Anything else coming?
I just had one more, what sheet do we need to look at for where we're doing really well, we have like an excess of money that we should be spending on upgrades for something specific, what sheet was?
So, that's probably, well, that's Statement C, what was it, it's twenty-something, that's your, that was your unassigned fund balance, yeah. So, like Mr. Chichet and I were saying, you know, what's a good balance to keep your unassigned fund balance at, and you take your total budget, divide it by twelve, multiply it times two and three, you should be somewhere right between there, which for you is probably somewhere between one point five million and probably two point two million.
Yeah, we've shown total loss, four point nine total.
But that's total, I'm talking just unrestricted, just unrestricted.
Unassigned, maybe?
Unassigned, sorry.
Two point three.
Yeah, yeah, so you're right, you're right there, you're like, maybe I have to move to the high end, but nothing wrong with that, that just tells me, one, you don't have cash flow problems, and two, you have a little bit of wiggle room when you do your budget, that you could use some of that money.
Right, well, that's what I want to.
For a purpose.
Because we have a lot of things we should be spending some of that money on.
Yeah, and do remember.
So, if we have a certain amount.
Yeah, and do remember, you know, when you do use that unassigned fund balance for your budget to, you know, to, instead of having a, you know, a four percent increase in taxes, you use some of that for, instead of having a three or two, doesn't mean you're going to use it, it's a budget tool, it doesn't mean you're going to use it, you could use it, I mean, if you had a bad year, your revenue didn't come in, and all your expenses were like blown out, you know, you'd probably use it, but if, in the best, that's a worst-case scenario. Usually, in a best-case scenario, you budget two or three hundred thousand dollars in the fund balance, may not even use it, may not even use it, depending how revenues and expenses go during the year, so. It's a good tool to use for budgeting, I always recommend using it. What you don't want to see when you do taxes is like, oh, we had an increase, oh, we had a decrease, oh, we had an increase, oh, we had a decrease, oh, we had an increase, oh, we had a decrease, what you want to see is, little increase, little increase, little increase, little increase, little increase, or maybe stagnant little increase, stagnant little increase, you know, so, but you guys do have the fund balance to be able to do that, so, and that's good, that helps, it's a good tool.
It is. All right, we're all set, council? Anything else, Mr. Hall?
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, like I said, I'm very pleased and happy with the town of Pittsfield where it is currently, so.
Well, thank you once again, and as I say, we'll see you next year.
Maybe, never know. I'm not going to try to.
Yeah.
Take care, everyone.
All right, thank you, we'll make sure you're done. All right, so let's move into discussion, we will start this evening with Cemetery Sexton and Mr. Peter Snell, I believe you have a presentation or discussion you'd like to bring up.
Two things, I'm going to get fifteen minutes, so I'll go quickly. First sheet is the selling of property or the buying of property. The land is next to the cemetery, it used to be owned by Mr. Bartlett, who had a shop there where he, his stones, I think it's about three tenths of an acre. When I first started, two thousand eight, I started working there, and three areas were not developed, I've developed them. I'm selling lots at a very rapid rate. I sold since last Tuesday, including today, seventeen lots. Some families are buying six at a time, I sold four today, and I've sold three singles. So, they're buying amountless at a faster rate than I, I had figured seventy-five to a hundred years. Don't ask me what I would think, no, I figured the next fifty years, you'll be all sold out, what I've got down there now, okay? We have five other cemeteries, but we don't, I just expanded one, just did ninety-nine percent of that is done, but that's for people normally that are out in the West Pittsfield area. So, right now, Mr. Bartlett came to me a number of years ago, and he said, with the town, I said, well, I'm looking around, none of you folks, none of town council, Ms. Ruth would say, but I didn't talk with her, I talked to a couple, and I thought he was awful high on what he was asking. He said, he was asking fifty-nine, he'd sell it to the town for fifty-five. Well, if you look down here, what he finally did sell it for, forty-five thousand, and he sold it to the outfits, it's up in the top left-hand corner. The person that bought this, I met in the year he bought it. The person that bought this, I met in the year he bought it. And he was going to use it as a junk school because he is ahead of that. There used to be the jumpers down here at our airport, but when Caleb stopped them, okay, then he was thinking about dividing it up into lots, which has never come. But that's something we ought to be looking forward to down the road. Well, I'm not looking forward to it cause I don't wanna talk, but when you folks decide what you wanna do. It's, uh, something I think you should look at. Now, it would be coming up, nope, I think, I don't know what we have in for the trust fund, but that would be a trust fund purchase, I would assume. Okay? And there's a picture and all the information that I think you would need. I'm not going to call these people unless I get your permission.
Is it, are they actively looking to sell or not?
Don't know.
Okay, so you haven't broached the subject?
I am not.
It may be a moot point we're talking about.
Right, but I will not contact them till I get permission from the town council. Cause I don't wanna overstep my bounds.
Well, I, I personally see no reason why I couldn't at least discuss it with them because if it's something that they're interested in, then we can come back to the council, have more discussions, what, but what can we budget? If he says he's not interested in.
I agree.
It's bigger or better.
I just didn't want.
No, I, I'm saying, I need a valid, valid, uh, valid point.
Before I get my toes stepped on.
So question for you on this, if this does become a possibility, um, have you looked at the property? I mean, that building is, is that building desirable or you?
Yeah, that's.
The building is desirable.
Yep, and then we have two huge cement slabs over there.
What, uh, what would you be using for that you don't have now?
Uh, I've got some storage issues.
Okay.
I really do, I've got four tractors, three trailers and all my equipment in that small building down there. And it's tough, plus I would like to further expand some of my tractors. And, uh, an excavator, instead of a smaller one, uh, roughly forty thousand cobot or a John Deere or whatever with a seven foot, that's.
So would you use this new building?
Storage?
In, in, instead of the one you have on the, something or in addition?
I'd be in addition to it.
Okay.
In addition.
So would there be ground there that you could use for plots? Or are you looking just for?
Well, I would, the, the town should, and looking around here, some of the younger, real young folks will be here and they can decide how it's gonna be developed. It wouldn't take, there's two lots, this one's gonna, well, I would hope it would want to be what done. The one that's just before us is swamp-like. And that's gonna be appropriated for less, but it would take, I wouldn't even wanna guess how much filled, that would have to bring that up. That's owned by a Frederick family and she's in probate right now.
So you're, you're talking, uh, west, west of your storage building now?
Right, right. But I think the community of the town, if you're looking down the road for children, grandchildren, and I've sold, well, as I told you, four of the lots today to former student, bought it for his father family. They're selling at a rapid rate, faster than I would thought, a lot of younger families.
So let me ask you about that specifically. Uh, I know this, I assume that you were looking at the land for plots, but that's not the case with this property anyway.
I'd like to get it for the future.
Right, so the land for plots, do you see a need to have that addressed in the next five, ten years?
No.
Okay.
I would say nineteen, twenty-seven, maybe fifty.
Okay.
Maybe fifty.
So I'm gonna cross that off my list at least.
Well, I know where.
Okay, that'll. So, so you're looking for storage?
Just, yes, storage for now. I'd like to be able to clean those pine trees out, it's a mess there and, uh.
What, what was that used for before?
Said, he would, it's what he used to, for his baking stones, stoneworks, something.
Oh, that's right too.
And vaults, he'd make his own vaults and sell.
Yep, I forgot about that, it's been quite a while.
Yes.
That's right too, okay.
So any questions, so I can get on with the next one, please?
So, any, any questions, uh, you know, I, I personally have no issues with, uh, having Peter, Mr. Guy call, at least.
Approaching.
Approach the ship.
Okay, do you mind?
No.
I'm just gonna ask him if, uh, he would come and sit down with me down to the cemetery and might spook him out. But I think there's a couple of places down there that are a little, a little. The next one is kind of a big one. We gotta get to the cemetery eventually, the roads. Since I've been there, I guess they've tried over the years, when I've been there, trying to tie them. And they're so steep, they're, I've got, ninety percent of the people that come to visit are elderly. And they don't have the best car or truck in the world and it's a low rider. They're dragging and dragging and dragging on the roads. And it's been, it's something that's bothered me for, for a number of years. And they're in bad shape, a lot of them, so. Earlier this spring, I met a man, a young man that lives down below me, uh, works for Chimbro, his name is Cody Verrill, and I brought him with me tonight. And I, don't take this, I thought he was a drone. No, but I found out it was a drone flyer, right, that he does especially. Not the word drone, which I used a lot of times when I was teaching for certain students. Oh, so I just got a cart to my neck, sorry boys. Uh, that, I asked him, I'm not an engineer, far, or, I know I do a lot of hunting and I do a lot of bird hunting, deer hunting, moose hunting. I've been on battle roads way up north, on dirt roads and, I mean, really rough. I've got probably a half a dozen roads that are in bad shape. I mean, real bad. And, uh, Corey can explain it better than I can, not being the engineer. I know we've only got a few more minutes and I don't wanna keep you all here. Mr. Verrill, he's been my asset, no charge, and he's been wonderful.
So I tried to keep it simple, uh, I passed out some math there and just to make it real simple. It, it, it doesn't show the whole upper, uh, north area, but, uh, you cut it off a little bit. That was just really to reference where, how I made the roads. And then you see in the spreadsheet, I did a tally of each road, the length of the road. And, and to just backtrack, I, I used the drone to, to make a map and then I can measure off the map, so I, I knew the length of the roads. And it's just really a simple calculation of the length of the road, times the width of the road, times the depth, and I, I did two different options where a six-inch fix or a three-inch fix. Um, but that, that is kind of overcomplicating it. Uh, that would be if you actually box cut it. Uh, I've talked to some of our earthwork contractors, Brent Newhouse and Jeff Chandler, uh, people in talent that, you know, have some experience with this and they don't recommend actually box cutting it, they'd like to leave, they would suggest leaving, uh, that center mound there and just fill in the ruts and then, you know, o- overfill them and then roll it in, uh, to compact it back down. Uh, and the prices that you see on there, the, the price in the green, uh, thirteen thousand eight forty, uh, that is a quote from, uh, Snowman's Construction for what they call gorilla gravel, which is three-quarter stone, which is what I would recommend to use. Um, that is priced just for material, uh, that, that quote was from back in the spring, so it's probably not necessarily valid anymore and, uh, we have to have a new quote. Um, but the numbers on the left, uh, are actually installed estimates and those are the rough order of magnitude estimates. Uh, and again, that, that's not a method that I would use. The method that I would use is just fill, like I said, overfilling the ruts themselves and that should be cheaper than actually doing the box cut. Uh, but you'd certainly wanna go out to, to bid to, to a contractor and get their actual price, but what this spreadsheet gives you is, is really a quantity of, of what I think it would take to fill in those, uh, those ruts. And, uh, just to elaborate a little bit on, on the, the process again. Uh, so when I calculated the, the length of the road, times the width and the thickness, I did my personal estimate of how bad I thought each road was and whether fifty percent of the road needed to be fixed or twenty-five percent or none of it. Uh, so that's just a straight calculation, I tried to keep it simple. Um, and then that's where, I, I think this spreadsheet is pretty self-explanatory, but, uh, I'm open to any questions and, you know, somebody could be, you know, somebody could say, um, fifty percent off or, or two hundred times off.
Oh, actually hoping you're right on. So just a couple of clarifications, you're showing a color gradients in here, so the dark orange one, that's the percent repair and that's a, uh, uh.
That's right.
Estimate that, that you would make given?
The dark, dark orange would be the, the worst.
That, that's your, that's your boots on the ground or eye in the sky?
What's that?
Is that boots on the ground or eye in the sky?
That's looking at the road, the road from standing there, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so that's my estimate of standing at the top, he'll looking down saying, this is the worst road here in the whole cemetery. Um, so yes, the, you know, the darker the color, the worse it is. And green is, we drove down, Michael, excuse me, each road.
Right.
Or you went up and down.
Right, no, I, I just wanna make sure, not from, not from the philosophy, you know, I, I just want clarification on it. So if you're looking at, let's say twenty ninth, I'll call it thirty grand. So thirty grand to have it, uh, not box cut, the filling of the treads?
Yep.
On the roads, you recommend, areas that you recommend. Of course, it's, it's your first shop through. Um, would that not come out of the cemetery fund, trust fund?
There's no reason why it, it couldn't. We have a capital cemetery account. Between all three cemetery accounts, we're well over a million dollars. Every month it changes, it can be ninety.
Okay, but, but it still needs to come to the council for approval to do so?
Yes, it's included on the capital and profit plan. There's over seven hundred thousand dollars that can be spent on the cemetery for all the different projects and for supplementing, uh, the cemetery budget, which we've been doing for a number of years.
Okay, so given your experience, uh, would, or Peter, maybe you know this, would we need to have some engineer stamp put onto this or can we go with this or?
I.
What do you think, I mean, what, what's, what's your?
My, my, sure answer would be no. Uh, I think, you know, you could really just, you know, take this quantity, start with the worst. You know, I don't think you're gonna go way over, uh, I don't think it can be that far off. But, uh, you know, like, like I said, we start with the worst road, worst roads and you'll know pretty quickly how it pans out.
So I certainly expect this to be a lot more, to be honest with you. Given, given, you know, that's the largest cemetery in town, that's, but that's the one you looked at though.
That's the only one that, the roads are that bad.
Yeah, when's the last time this was done? When's the last time?
Uh, I think the town manager before tried to tie one. Tried to put asphalt and.
Twenty years ago, we tried.
Oh, I didn't, no, no, yeah, it had to be longer.
Careful with that.
I mean, maybe Mr. Martin? Sheldon Martin?
There's been no maintenance done to these roads in the past?
I tried to do the best we can, but I've had three guys, you know what I just hired? An eighty-five?
No, I'm not.
And it's like, so the roads is very difficult. I do the, we do the best we can on them, but since, uh, you've got a John Deere tractor and a trailer.
No, yeah, no, I'm not being great, I'm just wondering, is this, is this every thirty years? We could do this as maintenance? Cause if so, I mean, this is a no brainer.
Is there cash position in that fund? Is it all, is it, is it invested, it's an investment account? Is it, what percent is cash?
There's enough cash to cover the two projects that I talked about. All they would do is, is put things, take things out of, um, their investment when they came due.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Nine hundred thousand, I saw?
Oh, we're over a million again? So, but I mean, in terms of cash, there's enough cash to just do this without?
I, I think, I think that's probably discussion B, C or even D.
Right. That's what I would, wanted to make sure that with both of them. It's not coming out of, and I'm a physical conservative on certain things. But since we have the money in that trust fund budget and it's, I don't know, I guess she's mentioned over a million.
So, so these numbers you said you had gotten earlier this year or the spring, maybe?
The spring, the spring.
You consider, uh, significant movement on that, I mean?
No, I would say.
Special.
A little bit. Yeah, yeah, it's gotta be a little bit, but I don't wanna go from like twenty-nine thousand to thirty-eight, you know, just because of materials.
So you just buy a yard and have thirty bucks a yard, so nineteen, I think is.
Well, okay. Well, that, yeah, that's nineteen material only, but you got, uh, it's all installed. And that's six inches, I mean, do you do the sixty, do you do the three, like, there's some places.
Are there US sexes?
I, there, there's a lot of details have to be worked out.
Right.
But if you're coming here, uh, to the council saying, this is what I'd like to do, I see no issues with that, it's just a matter of, uh, you as a sex bill would have to work out some details, uh, maybe some charts or some updated pricing and bring it back to the council, say, this is what I'd like to do. I wanna take it out of the fund, it's gonna cost this much, we can start now, we can end there, our price is gonna hold for ninety days, such and such, then we'd, we'd say yay or nay. I mean, I, it should be that simple.
To, to answer your question about an engineer stamping it, any contractor, you're gonna have somebody bid it, they're gonna have their, their in-house engineer verify these numbers?
Right, right. Yeah, I know that, the word gonna be on the staff, I miss a lot of detailed information for doing estimate, you know, greatly appreciated. I love Excel spreadsheets, by the way. I'm geeking out on this, it's perfect.
Yeah, hey, if you have any more questions, I'm, I'm always available, Peter neighbors. Yeah, neighbors, and you know where to visit me anytime. I'm there at six.
How about me? How about briefly, okay?
You want briefly?
Like a drive-by.
They don't like my sense of humor.
You hang out at Coloma? In that underground?
Well, I live on that.
In that little?
No, 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 no.
Jason, did you have?
I'd like to be there without.
No?
Oh, okay, I mean, they're, they're good, they'll look forward, look at it and whatever. I mean, yeah. Getting a better estimate.
Thank you for your access to some great information. Really appreciate it. Peter, was there anything else that you wanted to, uh, present?
Well, I don't wanna say anything about any baseball teams.
Okay, yeah, we don't have time for that.
No, you don't.
Nor probably the Oakland A's. Thank you very much for that, really appreciate it. Thank you guys. So, uh, the next topic for discussion, uh, three B will be a brief review of the Pittsfield Comp Plan. So, um, Catherine, did you have some bullet points that I don't see noted here? Or we're just gonna in general start talking about, you must have some highlights you want to review?
I think general discussion, um, at the last budget workshop last year, you went through the comprehensive plan quite extensively for about two hours and everybody was very tired afterwards. And so in the comprehensive plan, which is two thousand thirteen, um, on the town's website for everyone to download and, or review on, online, this is a plan that has helped the town greatly with different projects with getting massive amounts of Brent line because the projects are listed in the comprehensive plan. But it's a two thousand thirteen comprehensive plan and it's time to start review of it. So this is one of the projects that we should be budgeting for, um, this year, which would work well with the Main Street project and everything all come together quite nicely. So that's gonna be one of the projects that we should get some pricing for, for, uh, the budget for next year and then put on our P to update it. Most of the projects we found last year had been completed, but there were a few that, uh, we had that people thought were entrusted and I can list those and see if there are any that you wanted to go forward with and this will be brief. But after a review of the whole comprehensive plan, going through everything that we're working on, it may not have been, uh, in orderly, uh, projects being done in order going down through, but we found that we were working on most of them and making progress. through, but we found that we were working on most of them and making progress, already completed them. But a few things that people were interested in, um, was one, a floating dock for the pinnacle. And so we did research permitting and that is, um, something that can be done, but it's gonna require a few permits. But we do have a, a friend at Chimbrow, um, they're a permitting agent who is wonderful in, in getting updates and everything. She's working now on, uh.
Boat launch.
Yeah, on the boat launch so that they can get the, uh, permits changed because the, uh, staircase changed again. Um, so she's working on that and believe it would not be as complicated as it was in the beginning, like going to the Army Corps, the engineers, that's why we stayed away from that project all these years. Um, second is locate the Olmsted Planting Diagrams from the Manson Park in the 1920s. I saw a book before I came here that had those in there. I was all excited about that. I have not seen them here, um, and Manson Park does not have them.
What is it? I'm sorry.
They're called the Olm- Olm- Olmsted Planting Diagrams from Manson Park. It was the way Manson Park was supposed to develop back in the 1920s, um, when we had the, the library was built before then and libraries across the, um, United States were built. A dog park, uh, was mentioned, but considered a low priority. A community garden, however, people were concerned that the garden club was stretched really thin and knew so much and that, that would be a lot for them. Over the years, there's been talk of having like a community garden that would be down by the reuse center and a dog park and there's all, all kinds of projects, but they're ones that revenues are not forthcoming as of yet from grant programs for that. And citizens that investigated them, you know, after they found out the cost that would be involved with the fencing and stuff, just saw it was very expensive and likely not something that's handling budget for. But there is, um, from a document that came to us actually today, which is kind of amazing. They talked about the millions and millions of dollars that are coming down during the next two to three years. So I did, um, sign up for these free, um, seminar series that will be coming, um, from one of the Boston universities. So, uh, whether we get picked or not for it, cause it's very competitive, I don't know. We're a small town, but I did sign up for it and then they'll pick from all the projects that we put together, five, sort of across the United States. So this is a long shot, but we might learn something during the process. Community events should be expanded for the parks and that's something our creation committee is working on, other committees, so that is in progress. Performance standards are an accounting of the work completed by the Pittsfield Driftbusters that was funded by the recreation registration fees, um, should be done on a yearly basis. And Pittsfield Driftbusters should do a lot of work on the bridge, the environment information, took care of the bridge issue down at Manson Park, did a very good job.
So what was that again, please?
Yes, I think this is actually yours.
Yeah, that's why it sounds familiar.
Yes. Performance standards are an accounting of the work completed by the Pittsfield Driftbusters, which is funded by the recreation registration fees provided by the town on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
So we would ask them for an accounting of how they utilize the monies that they get each year. It's not a lot of money at all.
I did see they put out a new map, snowmobile map.
Yes.
Much better than, uh, photocopied and highlighted.
Yes.
It actually looks pretty darn good.
And I think I gave you a copy and they've gotten some more, so I have another copy for you upstairs if you'd like it and for anyone else. Let's see, number seven, veteran mapping or GIS mapping technology? Definitely. This is an area where the tax maps have got to be updated. I know they're part of the, um, the assessor or the appraiser's work, but they just run over so much because it's so busy here and they've got so much to do that they just finished the tax commitment, you know, by the due date there. Um, but we do need to deal with the GIS mapping and everything beyond what, um, KB Cod can, uh, provide us. And that's something I think, um, that Corey and somebody else at Chimbrow might be able to help us with.
Um, yeah, Klein Smith might be able to help.
Oh, Klein Smith, yeah, that would, that would be wonderful. Eight, a meeting involving the Snowmobile Club and the ATV Club was mentioned. And then nine, one person dedicated to economic development is when, when we had time, I used to work on this all the time, but now it's sort of hit a miss. It's sort of hit a miss for everything. We just run around and work on everything so that we keep everything going and have accomplishments and get grants and everything. Ten, another brush removal project. I know that transfer station isn't looking forward to that, cause that was a massive project, but some sort of cleanup is a good idea, which Brent had, something that we do once a year in which people can put out everything that they have and maybe even, even the brush and, um, the trees, but we might need a contractor to be involved with that too, not just, um, public work employees and, and transfer station and water sewer that are everywhere.
Volunteer.
Yeah, volunteers.
Yes, to coordinate.
And it's logical with.
Which we, yeah, have to, um, try to get you on our insurance plan. Um, 11, having a rebate for farmers who meet requirements on conservation of farmland. And that's something that would be, we would need to dedicate some time to that. Somebody would actually have to work on that and do all the research for it. And 12, um, of course we discussed how the roads, the rebuilding, reclaiming, grinding and paving was gonna be a priority, which it has been, um, for the last, last four years, but one year, uh, last four-year period, but only for three years because people were very concerned about the loans from, in 20 for, um, 21, so there was no loan taken out. And those are the items that we talked about from the comprehensive plan that we had not hit in the plan.
So is there, uh, notice kind of a huge, it was 148 pages on the comp plan? And, uh, I don't know if any, any councils had, had a chance to look at it to add to that list or, cause I had forgotten all about the list since I started reading it and I don't remember the Snowmobile Club issue. So is there any, uh, anything in particular that the council would like to discuss or bring up, add to the list or anything on the list that they would like to, um, prioritize? I know there's, there's an awful lot, we got two between now and, now and hopefully Thanksgiving or at least first of December. So maybe it's more of a rhetorical question than anything, I guess. Let me put it this way, let's, uh, take a look through the comp plan, um, write down some notes, have any ideas or if you're good with it, say so, or if you have some items that you'd like to bring up, uh, next time, we can, uh, kind of touch upon it like next time. Just keep in mind to the, even just doing the basic, simple budget is very time consuming. When we start adding these, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna call them head projects, that's a negative connotation, I won't do that. Uh, but when we start adding these more projects above, beyond what our regular budget's going to be, and I'm pretty sure it's not gonna be pleasant, just, just keep that in mind. I mean, there, there may be some items that we would like to, uh, bring up and actually pursue as part of the budget.
Catherine mentioned the comprehensive plan itself needs to be updated. Who does, who does that and how? I mean, it's been nine years now, so do we have any idea how much that was? Is it 10 grand? Is it 50 grand? I have no idea.
It was, it was around 29 to 30,000. We got it cut down by negotiating with KB Cod, the loan bidder, so that we did some of the work. So I think it was 23,000 by the time that we were done. And that was utilizing our dues allocation fully, um, so I didn't ask for anything else during the year. That was the comprehensive plan, took care of that. We did a lot of the work. We had the different agencies and individuals that we contacted provide us with write-ups and then I would track them first and then the planner would fix it, um, only with the same or do his own. So we would put out a RFP. There are a few private companies, um, and the Tenth Valley Council government have did all that, but usually did a lot more.
Okay. So would this directly correlate with the PPI plan?
Well, this is all coming nicely closely together, so it's good. It could be made, it could run simultaneously, you could make it out of it, but in the comprehensive plan, it can be for review, can be as detailed or as, um, brief as you would want. Uh, we've had a couple of reviews in which the planning board did everything themselves and did it themselves and then had myself and the, uh, former code officer make all the changes and then they approved it and recommended it to the council. And then after a couple of times of that, we thought we should have somebody from the outside look at it to see if they would pick up something we did not. So that's when we put it out to dead.
I know with the recreation group, there's been a lot of talk about master planning by park and so there is separate, and I'm sure it's not part of that because it was just in the last couple of years that they were looking at like pinnacle and Hathaway and different things to be done. So I didn't know if that had been included or not, but, um, I would be in favor of some, to go with the theme of cleaning up Pittsfield, like any of those cleanup projects would be on point with that.
Definitely.
So is that, that's, is that separate from the comprehensive plan? Is that more capital improvement or?
Well, I, I would think it'd be part of the comp plan because I'm looking at it now and it has a number of parts in the described state, transportation, infrastructure, government, uh, population, employment, and then at the very end, not at the very end, but, uh, the last, uh, quarter or so has, uh, recommendations. General recommendations, land use plan, capital investment planning process, and regional coordination. So I, I think part of this would be, um, number one, get it up. Like I said, it's nine years old and I'm looking through the UTC, they're talking about other businesses that no longer, uh, exist. Populations have changed, um, our, our, uh, taxes have changed and what we're able to offer, uh, businesses have changed and from that, I guess that would be the foundation. Okay. This is what we have now, what would, we'll have new recommendations and new, uh, conclusions from that. So I, I guess we ought to at least update it and get it up to snuff, up to date. And then, I mean, what we're looking at here, um, they were talking about, uh, the mill, the property, uh, the mill that, uh, Chimbrow's tearing down here, uh, when this was UTC, SES is still a vacant building. I mean, the dynamics now totally different what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So we may have recommendations in there that we're not even conceiving here, that somebody who does us for a living, oh, well, he's got this, hey, consider this to be like one of those lightbulb moments I put out of the air. So if, uh, I guess what we're looking for Catherine is a recommendation that we would redo this comp plan?
It's time to start that process. We can put together an RFP, update the one that we did before. And then depending on what the pricing is, um, it may or may not be something that you would put in the budget. There's three different ways to do it. The planning board can do it with the staff. Um, we can do a combination of a, uh, planning consultant from KB Cod that helps the planning board and the staff and all the others that are involved. Or we can put it out to bid in the RFP, um, and I think because of all the changes that are going on and how COVID's changed everything, that's probably the best way to start.
Given the staffing that we are working, I mean, I'd like, I think we have people to plan for it, that was all for, uh, pee and vinegar to, you know, roll, so to do so, but I don't think that's very practical at all.
So I'll pull up the RFP and get that ready to go.
Catherine, uh, side note, I'm not really, uh, so you got the ARCA funds here?
Yes.
What is, what do we have left? That 70, 79,000?
Yes, I brought this down so that you could have a copy and you could ask.
Right.
So on hold was the highway projects under the actual, in the beginning you had your preliminary at the top, but that changed, which we knew it would, we just had to do that, so we just got spending the funds that needed. So the actual is the, the second category of the second block area. So everything has been allocated by you, with the exception of highway projects that's on hold, you have 78,009, 70.
967.
67 and 9 cents. And then there may be a few little pieces keep coming, like 233 dollars in a month that's, other places don't use their funds and they divide it up amongst everyone.
I mean, Mike, I don't know if you really wanna spend all of it, but my thought was like the PPI is 35 grand. Comprehensive plan is probably, let's say 35 to 40. I don't know if that's the best use of that money or not, but it's an option that you nail both of them and get them out of the way and don't impact anybody.
It, it's, it's gonna need some serious considerations. I, I actually was going to suggest, I'm glad you brought it up, because if you look at, uh, once every nine years, 28 to 30 grand without, you know, without the Pittsfield being felt elsewhere, it'd be nice to have that 78 grand in case we needed something else. However, right, this, this is an investment.
Right. And if we use this, we can use it this year and not that we get the comprehensive plan back before budget season, I guess.
Oh, no.
We wouldn't, uh, so when you're on your third, fourth term, you'll be talking about refunding that?
Yeah.
No doubt. I hear it on that.
Yeah, the comp plan.
I have complete faith in you, my friend.
Yeah.
The comp plan is used in like eight-month process to go.
Okay, yeah. So what we, what we can do if this year to address it, at least allow for the amount, uh, so if you put out an RFP for that, when do you think we'd have a pricing that we can discuss?
Well, we can approve the RFP at the next council meeting, so it's the 10th of 6th and then we, we need to get them three weeks. So we would have it back in time to.
That it'd be put on discussion for budget for this, for 2023?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any issues, concerns, comments, questions about, that want to generate an RFP for this? We're gonna go through the process and be, before the council, but at least give Catherine the green light to at least get the ball rolling. All right, very good. Thank you all for that. Uh, 3C, uh, identifying projects and/or items to research for the 2023 budget. Catherine, did you have bullet points that you wanted to discuss on that?
I just, just a few projects that I heard that we talked about during the year. Obviously the digitization is something that we've always wanted to do, however, we didn't touch it enough for it and the computers overtook over everything, um, so no money was available for digitization. When we got the estimates the first time, uh, we had several companies come in, they looked through everything that we had and their estimates were, um, just amazingly high, so we were gonna just do a small amount. Brent went down and talked to people at, um, Klein Smith, cause it's life works, they had found out, you know, the amount of materials they have is similar to what we have, it's just in a different form, although we do have a lot of maps. And the size of the room in which you put everything together is approximately pretty, uh, pretty close with all the saves and everything, um, to the big room that they used to have downstairs. So it's over $200,000 and those were, we were quoted, uh, 183,000, um, you know.
So that, that's for somebody from the outside coming in doing for us. I mean, we could almost make a position and hire somebody to do nothing but that, how it'd take a lot cheaper, plus buying scanners and computers to do so.
You can buy scanners to do that, yeah, to keep away from the photocopier, cause we try to use that and there's too many interruptions. So you have your own separate. We can price out the, the different ways, get the estimates again and just because it's gonna cost, let's say 150,000, it's not something we have to do every year. We would just phase it.
Part of that tool, I mean, this is gonna be two or three years and I think that's probably aggressive to have this digitized properly. Part of that's gonna be putting in a system in place so that every department, every person does that automatically.
Mm-hmm.
So that we don't talk, so that you guys don't talk about this another four to eight years.
At the same time, I mean, you're gonna have to have somebody that knows, okay, this doesn't need to be scanned, this is just, we can dispose of this. We need to scan this.
Do it.
It's not gonna be able to make that decision.
Dock control, developing the process, doing the training, having some, one person responsible for it, not necessarily a town manager, but having a person responsible for dock control. It's, it sounds simple and I've done it before, but it can get overwhelming very quick. And that was before PCs.
Right. Honestly, Mike, I mean, I don't think 183 or 200,000 is out of line, even if you hired someone to do it yourself. I mean, if you hire, I've had people do digitization of my documents before and it was not good. So I would almost prefer to do it myself, because you knew it was gonna get done, right? But I guess my point is that if we hired someone, a dot control person that's really detail-oriented and understands how to organize files, because it makes a huge difference, and you gotta think like other people think sometimes, to lay that stuff out, right?
And they have to be searchable.
And it has to be searchable, hundred percent, right? So I just, I don't, I don't know that, I don't disagree with either way, whether we sub it out or do it in-house. But if we do it in-house, it's gotta be someone qualified to do it, because it's not as easy, as definitely and boring as that would be for me to do. Like, someone can do that and really enjoy it, but you have to really like that kind of stuff.
No, I mean, excellent point. I mean, anyone can throw a paper through a scanner, but if it's not readable, it's not searchable, and if it's not stored correctly.
Oh, it's upside down, backwards, foot, foot law, that one with just a blank side, it was just like, I wish I did it myself.
Is, is the system now, I mean, so you guys have shared drives, I'm assuming, and now you use all those, right? So we're not continuing to pile up as we prepare to move into this phase, or we are? Like, are we currently making more paper documents, or has the process already shifted to an electronic shared drive for some of this stuff?
Well, we've always had an electronic shared drive, but a lot of people are, use paper. Like, I can't use the computer to read the things, and some of the staff has trouble doing it too, so they print out a paper. Now, we will recycle some of these pages when we're done. But oftentimes, in the past, the computers would spin and, you know, and not work. And even the new ones we got are starting to have issues and things. And they, they were new, we waited for them for six months, seven months. So we do have both, and then we have just the computer, depends on the item.
Okay, I'm just, it sounds like we need more than just...
We don't have a process.
We don't have a process.
No, no, we don't. We don't have a process where if you generate a document, okay, now I need to file this. I can open up vanilla folder and draw, put it in, it has to be digitized, it has to be scanned. And that's part of the process, how long do we keep the original?
It still gets scanned, everything gets scanned, but some people have paper too.
Yeah, but they, but they scan it and put it somewhere, it's not, so if you just have megabytes, gigabytes of data, that's useless because you don't know what's where, or you can't search it, correct?
We've got all the categories by search it, some of them can be searched.
Yeah, see, if, if we're gonna take this step, it all has to be. Some of the old stuff, probably it's gonna be an issue, let's, let's say from nineteen eighty-four up, when the PCs started coming out. Anything before that, we can just scan it and somebody, like microfiche. Microfiche, how many people have heard that term before, aside from me?
I think to Lindsay's point, what she's, I mean, I think it's a great idea, before we invest in doing all the old stuff, why don't we develop a process?
We need a process map and a consultant to come in and say, tell me how you store information and do, and do that first. And then create the systems, and then you just backload into it versus... Because otherwise, you're doing something and then the new stuff is piling up as you're, it's not gonna work. And we just went through this in another organization that I work with. So the old stuff is almost like a project in itself, we don't have a beginning and an end of putting everything in, but the process map of how you manage information as a entity, that has to be done first and then go back.
It's very hard for people to keep to a schedule, like this is the way the documents are set up, this is the way, because all of a sudden they're in a hurry, and then they stick a document, you know, with different...
And then you have turnover, right? So you have new people coming and going, so it's, it is complex, but I think before we digitize what we have, we should process map what we're doing now and then work our way that way.
We are putting everything in, into the computer.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, I think it's not necessarily gonna take a long time for someone to come in and do that. That could be done by an information systems consultant, which I literally just went through this, a project just like this. Like, did an RFP, found a company that can look at your processes, no matter what it is that you're doing, any organization, and say, okay, how do you want to store this information? And most of that was relative to creating network drives and things like that that just didn't exist, it was an older...
That's it, right, like, that's a great, like, we can budget that.
Yeah, that's...
Like, let's not worry about, I mean, we should worry about all of this, but we will put that on the sideburner and focus on...
And it'll cost thirty-three dollars.
Right, going forward, and that is an RFP, and that will go...
So at least we're not adding to that pile, right? So is that a local company?
Yeah, there's like a whole bunch, there's tons of them that do it. Actually, the, the company that is now the police departments, they actually bid on the job that we did at Southern, and they didn't get the bid, but they were excellent. And they kind of were a little more advanced than what we even needed, we needed something smaller. So we went with a much smaller operation, this is, this is much bigger, so they might even be somebody who would be interested in that. And they already are involved, because they help out the police department, so you could figure that out.
Would you have a non-descript generic RFP that you could share?
Oof, well, ours is so, I mean, this would be a lot more complex, because it's a town.
Catherine, that's probably something, is there something, yeah, is there something you could look for on that?
I did, I did look on the internet, I have a couple of examples. I'm not too happy with them, but if I put out a note on the town manager's list serve, some of the Southern Maine towns have done.
I can check with Klein's, because we know they're doing it. So maybe they have something in there.
So they must, they must have that built in their system, all right? It's like Klein's.
What's that?
They must have systems in place that they have developed, that they do as part of their...
They're rather small.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's separate, I was thinking the other side.
Well, Lindsay, do they provide just like the manpower, horsepower, or do they provide the scans and the...
The organization got a grant, so they got a fifty thousand dollar grant for this purpose, to digitize their, and, and create better ITIS systems and workflows. So we used a part of that money to pay the consultant to come in and process map the whole thing. And then, of course, some of that would be used for software and all the things like network, hard drives, all that. So, so it's a little bit different of a scope, but I think, I think you could easily get somebody to come in and look at the process and the workflow and say, okay, this is where, the issue's gonna be, you have Logically, or is that the brand of the company or whatever, and you have these other vendors and information system people you're working with, but a good IT consultant will be able to come in and say, okay, that's okay, you can still use them, and this is how you should map it out. But I think it's totally doable.
Well, and who's to say Logically can't do it, like, maybe, maybe they have the capability?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, it doesn't sound like we have, yeah, that's true.
I don't think we know the...
Their capacity, no, I agree with you. They might have project managers, but I think it's gonna cost us some money, but I think it would probably be better than to do it. Otherwise, we're putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, it's definitely the first step, yeah.
Well, we definitely won't show them the safe downstairs.
No.
First time I saw it, I said, well, I'd like to check out the safe, and everybody was like, no, no, you don't wanna go in there. Well, we opened it up and stuff fell out, so we reorganized it eventually, it took a few years.
So it would be kind of like an ISIT workflow improvement project, and that you could do the RFP on, based on whatever your resources are from Southern Maine, and then you could do that RFP first. And then that would probably be something we could tangibly accomplish this year.
We definitely need to do this. I can make up any list I want and give them out to the staff, but not ever, they just don't speak to it.
Right.
So I believe we're agreeing for two things. First of all, to ask Catherine to generate and send out an RFP for digitization, and based on that, consider putting that onto the budget discussion between now and the end of the year?
It's not digitization, no, it's the mapping of stuff.
Right, right, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the digitization should be included, because whoever does this is gonna say, okay, now we've done this, and here's the back...
Yeah, sure, tell them this is what we'd like to do. To start, we need to get our infrastructure in place, but our ventuality would be that we need to have this. You call that option B. Option A, if you want this, maybe we can do option A now, and maybe next budget, we can do option B, we'll hold this price for the next year. However they want to work it, that way their foot's in the door, they know we're calling it.
And some of these companies that do this don't do that. They're like, you don't want us to do your data entry or your whatever, because we are so expensive. But we are the brains behind creating your process, and then here are a list of five companies that you can pay to do that piece of it for you. And so they actually did that, because there was like eight years of back, eight years is very small compared to what we have here. It was like eight years of back documents that filled, you know, like a bunch of filing cabinets. And the workers were like, we could never do this, how would we ever? And they're like, you wouldn't, you would do it as a separate project, you would pay a separate company, they would do it, but according to this workflow. And then you're good.
Do we network with other towns that have already been through this process?
Well, that's why we would send out some, a request on the town manager's list serve, because this has been done quite a bit in Southern Maine. So we would be able to get some...
Maybe, I mean, I think, as far as value engineering, I think it'd be YC's a firm that's already done some of it with town, so they know the nomenclature as far ahead, you know, name the files and the structure.
So the town manager's list serve is kind of like a...
Like a job wanted, or like an information...
Yeah, based on town manager.
Information sharing, the town clerks have one, the treasurers have one, code officers have one, they all get on there and share information, request for proposals, and a number of years ago, Southern Maine towns started doing all this, it just hasn't gotten out past here yet.
It's really great, with the school, the state school nurse consortium has one too. So it's like, hey, we have a kid with this weird diagnosis no one has seen in a hundred years, does anyone have it? And they all will share it, so it's really good for networking that way.
That's an excellent idea, very good, I didn't know they had a list or a thing like that, perfect. Good information. So that's, that's one thing we'll consider, anyone have anything else they'd like to discuss? Let's look at the list here, Catherine, is there anything that you want to point out by detail on this?
I think it's self-explanatory. We know we're gonna work on paving, road construction rehab. Once we get further along, we can head to the sidewalks, which will be very important. The water sewer, because right now with the new water sewer projects that we've approved, we can exhort them into the water sewer budget, and that was part of the reason, as well as the fact that the depreciation keeps getting bigger in the, in the water department, that we increase the water rate. So we could cover the projects that we have now. But if we keep going on, we're gonna have to have a rate increase again. So we'd like to look around for more grant funding.
That should be a given every year. Instead of five percent every two years, do one and a half, two percent every year, that should be given.
Or it's seven percent.
Because we, you know, for longest time, we drive ourselves, when I started in oh-eight, whenever it was, we held the line on taxes for years, twelve years?
Yes.
Thirteen years? Not an increase, we're patting ourselves on the back, boy, we weren't watering the garden, we weren't figuring out why we weren't...
Yeah, because our rates are still really low. Stay soft, stay wide, so...
I mean, and why we've done that, it, you know, it's beyond me. I mean, I know there was reasoning in the past, that's just been the MO for this town for a long time. I mean, one of the biggest things I talked about, at the discussion, we talked about when I first came on doing that lagoon, and I got the idea of the new water meters, and how those are gonna be red, and all the complaints about that, and the trailer park up there had issues with it, and we got, we were the lowest, if not one of the, one of the lowest in the state for the rates, water rates besides the town we work in the state. Why we did that to ourselves, and we complained, we didn't have money, yet our rates were the lowest in the state.
Right, it's not really a war you wanna win, I mean, that's...
No, no, you're right, you are, you're right, we shot ourselves in the foot, and geez, boy, that really hurts, put a band-aid on, he'll shoot ourselves in the foot again.
When I came here, all the inspectors from the state showed up and said, you're gonna have to do these projects, and you need to increase your water sewer rates, because the town actually had the lowest sewer rate in the state of Maine, and nearly the lowest water rate, which was always a sense of pride of the, of everybody here that was involved. But it didn't work out well when we tried to do one little project the first year, and we were gonna overdraft the budget, and we couldn't do it, so we had to figure out how to budget for that. And so it took a while to get the water meters in and everything, instead of having all the different types, we had one type. And then we were able to have a proper rate increase.
So that should probably be put on the list for discussion.
It's not the end of the world if that increases again, then maybe we get Annalise's input on...
No, no, it isn't, I, I think what we should look at is five, ten years looking ahead. Where do we need to be in ten years, okay? Can we do a point seven-five percent increase in the next ten years and be where we need to be? Can we hold, maintain, or can we at least grow? And if we go fifteen percent one year, the human cry you're gonna hear, we've heard that already, and that really was a very minor increase.
She comes to one of those meetings, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we go over all that?
Yep.
Talk about that, Dan.
But, yeah, certainly something to consider specifically, I mean, we can add that to the list of the digitization, or at least the RFP for some, for such.
And then the buildings review, that's something that's been brought up. The staff had planned to do that, and Donnie was gonna go around and do the safety inspections for all the buildings. He does minor ones now, but go through everything and find the issues that needed to be addressed. Some are pretty obvious, but most of them would not be if people weren't looking for it. But he's busy with the roads, so that's not gonna happen. So this might be an area where we'd want to get an engineer to go through all of our buildings and facilities, and do a facility review.
So are we talking structural, because I thought we'd gone through this before, we're talking about, you know, pointing the bricks in the firehouse, and you and I were talking about that.
I think structural.
And Donnie had like, wasn't it an OSHA report or something?
Yeah, he does his own, he'll do that report, but that's not everything, that's just sort of, essentially, it's just shows.
Right, don't invite him in, because when they say we don't give you tickets, like, no, no, that's what I can remember. Well, yeah, because he said there was a, yeah, he gave it to us and he was supposed to address stuff, but you're talking about a different...
Yes.
This is town-owned buildings?
Yes.
All town-owned buildings, or just town buildings that there are currently like town operations going through? Like, is it like properties that we may own that are vacant also being included in this review, or no?
So we have, from a lot of the properties, I was saying the buildings, basically. But some buildings, some lots just have storage buildings, or like the sewer treatment plant building. But still, there's issue, there were issues there that weren't picked up, because nobody inspected.
So that's, okay, so this would be going out for someone to come and inspect all, or a building inspector, basically?
Yeah.
Building inspection on all...
Unless we hired a full-time code officer who was also an engineer, knew buildings really well.
I personally think that that'd be, that should happen.
That's probably coming down the pipe anyway, potentially, right? I mean, based on what we've been doing for the last three months, so... But I don't know that you'll find an individual qualified to be such a person in the town.
Paying that much money to be an engineer, and, I mean, I think there's some resources across the road that we could probably use to help us with some of that stuff, right?
Yeah.
And we've been told numerous times to make that call too.
Right, probably bashful, so...
If we get to the point where they finally say, no, that's enough, this town's gonna be absolutely gorgeous. Honestly, see, he has been upset because we haven't asked for help.
Right.
Literally.
Yeah, I mean, I think code enforcing officer full-time is a high priority.
That's, yeah, good point.
Real quick, Catherine, just on the building, just because we're talking about buildings, capital, our assets are, I know we're gonna get the fixed assets, or the asset list, that was one of my questions anyway for this workshop, and I don't know if now is the right time to ask it. But as we talk about moving forward and, you know, cleaning up Pittsfield, cleaning up the de-located buildings, all this, do we have a running list of town-owned properties, I'm sure that you do somewhere, that, that we could potentially liquidate or sell or whatever? Is there, is there, are there opportunities that we aren't realizing that are sitting not becoming part of the tax base that we could look at for, as part of this?
The town of Pittsfield has a lot of property, and so when I came, we cleaned up the tax-acquired properties. We had fifty-one of them, and that was quite the experience, so two councils and myself went out. Eventually, all of, all of those were sold. And then that leaves the town properties, which we started in on, and then we learned that there are a lot of restrictions on these when the town accepted them. So we've got a couple of state properties that have been deeded to the town for X years, but eventually will go back to the state. We have a large tract of land off Sycamore Pond that has no deeded access, and we were told if we went down there, the shotguns would come out. But getting down in there is difficult, and you would need a right-of-way if you're gonna sell something.
Like, like access only?
Yes, 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 and it's deep cliff to go up, go up on. We do have a couple of tiny pieces of land that obstrucks, when the roads were changed around, they're very tiny. Those could be sold, but basically a neighbor would purchase them, they're tiny.
Right, but no, like, like, I don't know, I'm just thinking...
Can we get a, can we get a list that we can do?
Like, town-owned properties that are maybe in somewhere in no man's land in terms of what we're doing with them, and then maybe assess those separately and go from there, just as part of the process of thinking about it.
That would be very good, we've done that twice before, it's good to do it.
How long has it been since the last time that was done?
Seven years.
Oh, really? Oh, that's actually pretty recent.
I guess still, that should be, I think every two or three years should be done anyway, first of all.
So on the airport, there's a lot of acreage down there, but since we bought most of it with grant funding, if we did sell it, we have to pay the grants back.
Is that time limited?
Unfortunately, no.
Was it airport-specific grants or town of Pittsfield grants?
Airport grants, yes. We've tried to sell, we tried to sell a couple of pieces of property, thought would be ideal, somebody wanted one for a business in another area, they wanted for the budding to their property. You have to sell it, or if you're going to rent it or lease it, it has to be for fair market value. So this got to be too extreme for the leasing and everything. So this got to be too extreme for the leasing and everything. And then to sell it, you have to pay back the grant funding that you bought it with.
But if you sell it for fair market value, and then you pay it back to the grant, but then you now collect taxes on that increased lot size, the town in the end wins, right? I mean, that makes mathematically.
Keeping the profit from hopefully.
At least, even if you don't make the profit, put it back on the tax bill.
The tax bill, but we would collect in the end eventually. I know that it might take a year or two. Didn't realize that. But I was just thinking, like, we need housing. There's so many things we need, right? We're going to have to pick what we're going to do in the next three to five. But housing is a big issue, and it's like, well, if we were going to do housing in this town, where would we go? Where would we put it if we were going to increase housing between the $175,000 to $250,000 range to attract new families and business, like, we've got to start, or elderly, whatever. There's lots of different types of opportunities for housing that we just don't have. And I know grants play a huge role in that, but also just knowing what you already are not using, that you could repurpose, or whatever. I was just kind of.
You know, you didn't have to look at me when you said elderly housing.
I know. Elderly housing, the people that are going to. But I mean, there's just so many people that would come here. There's like, what, seven houses on the market in Pittsfield? And they're all not.
That's been the biggest issue.
Yeah. There's a $950,000 house, and then there's like a $62,000 dilapidated shit, and that's pretty much it. There's no real in-between market to speak of.
That $950,000 Sycamore Pond.
Yes, it is. I tried to get my brother to buy it. We won't. I'm like, come on.
Good moral for 25.
I thought they broke it off. They broke the camp off it.
They did?
They broke it.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, I'm keeping an eye on that.
So I'll pull up the tax.
Me too.
I pulled my shoe stand up, and that's what we're saying.
I'll pull up the town properties.
Okay.
There are two tax-acquired properties, one of which will be sold back to the people shortly at the next meeting, which is good. Then we only have one left, and that's a discussion piece for. So we'll have that. We'll have the fixed assets listing. We'll go with fixed assets and not the inventory, because it's set up differently.
And he said the fixed assets was more comprehensive anyway.
Yeah, to use that.
So we're keeping a tally of what we want, put on the budget, okay? You've got the CEO position full-time, okay? So that'll be.
Not that we need, not that we need more projects, but we kind of dropped the ball on the whole Pittsfield valuation, property valuation quarterly project we talked about like three or four months ago.
Well, I don't know if we dropped the ball. We just haven't, it hasn't crossed our path yet. I mean, that's actually something I hadn't thought about.
But I don't know, we never saw, or I didn't see the proposal.
I have the quote. I haven't distributed it anyplace, because if we decide to put it up to bid, it's not fair to them if their price gets out, because they'll be bidding, others will know what their price is. So I've kept that to myself.
So did they not react to an RFP? Do we have an RFP we can do with that?
All right. That's what we need to decide. Do we want to do an RFP, or do we just want to go with them? And we.
No, yeah, I kind of thought that's what the range we were going to go. I know you talked about having that company.
R D.
Yeah, have an R D give us a price on that. But I assume that was going to be one price of several that we expected to have our RFP.
I think we put it out to bid.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do have a bid document.
Okay. So can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, or?
It might have to be the meeting after that, simply because it's set up for a lot of town. But we'll see.
I think the lot of.
You mean like, you mean.
For, to bring before the council for a formal RFP for evaluation.
The council needs to approve.
Right, before they can even go out.
Yes.
Okay, guys.
Unless it's a little project.
Yeah, okay.
So can we, now, he mentioned doing over a two or three-year span?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
So if we could use, I wonder, maybe I'm just kind of spitballing here. If we have, let's say, amount of, say, $100,000 to do that over four years. So for 2023, we're going to need to put in $25,000 in the budget. Do we have a number we could use for that? Do we expect RFPs back in time to do that for this budget session? Normally, would we have to have a merged session?
Oh, no, no, you wouldn't have to at all. Any of the figures that we put in the budget are all estimates anyway. And so if you do an RFP at any time, like after we get the budget, or even next year, I'm not saying to do this, we would just have to reallocate monies, or go over in one line and be under in another. So that's fine.
Okay. Is that?
Yep.
Okay, good. Glad you brought it up.
The one thing, I have to finish the tax liens, and this has been a total challenge with the change of the software. And I have to get the budget packages together, so I might not have all these RFPs ready shortly.
That's fine.
I'll have at least one or two, but not three.
That's all right. No, that's fine. Catherine, thank you for that.
Yes, the tax liens have got to go on, and that has been interesting.
Anything else, Council?
No, I would say these are pretty much the items, and then before I give the budget packages out to the staff, which will be due to them by the end of the week, and then they have their due date, and we'll go over the revised budget calendar. I just need to check on the zero increase that you wanted in the bottom line. I'm assuming it's operations, but I didn't want to assume that.
It should be overall. I mean, what do we have obligations for payroll increases? Do we have cost of living obligations, or is that something that we've done because we're a fun town?
I think we're going to have some issues with staffing, because people can easily go anyplace now because of the unemployment rate. Some won't, but some will.
What I wanted to get out of that is not put on notice, I don't want to make a negative connotation. Everyone needs to really look hard at their budgets. I, you know, I'd like to think that they could do a ground-up instead of adding on to what was done last year. That's actually the best way to do it. Takes an awful lot of work, and if you do it every single year, it gets to be a pain in the behind. I've done it many times. I wanted them to stop and think about it, and really give it some thought, instead of throwing a dart at the board. I'll ask for 20, and if I get 10, I'm still doing great. I don't know, I may be completely off-base, but I don't know if the budgets with these department heads have been looked at at that kind of detail, or at least given that direction to really be very critical of themselves and their own budgets.
They were for many years, which is how, I mean, sincerely, we're going around in a circle now, because we were very intense on no increases, the zero-based budgeting, which I agree with, and have done in other towns. But it got to the point where we couldn't increase things, and then the prices got beyond us. And then the council stepped in and said, look, this is not working, and took all budget goals off, which then went the other direction. So we need something in the middle.
Yep, I think that's exactly what we're doing. I think you're always going to have this, and as long as we always keep it like this, and it's not like this, or like this, we'll be good. I think it's a good balance. I think it's, but you have to have some accountability. It's not just the wish lists and.
That's what I was looking for. But I wanted to make sure that they were more critical of themselves than we as the council would be.
Right.
And I know, I've worked at places, and I've been responsible for budgets. I've been responsible for viewing other people's budgets. It's an easy trap to fall into. Well, last year we did this, and we were right on just 5% more, 10% more. Good, my budget session is done.
Right.
You know, as I mentioned before, ideally, the best way to do a budget is from the ground up. When you've done it a hundred years, or where you're just starting. That way, you look at every single item. You're forced, as a person who's been doing the same thing for 20 years, you're forced to look at it, refresh eyes every time.
I like the zero-based budgeting.
I do too, but you're right. It's not practical, and it's not practical for this town. If we had the department heads that could sit at their desks, look at this, and make the calls, do the numbers, and go off pricing, if we had the people to do that, if we had an accounting department that crunches numbers for them, perfect. But, you know, you've got people like Don, I would say Don is a perfect example. People in this town, he's doing everything, everything. He's everywhere. I just want, I just want them to know that we're going to be looking at it. I'm not saying to get, oh, geez, you're one penny over. No, we're not going to go back. I just want them to be as critical as we're going to be.
Right. But I do think we have to be pretty sensitive that, you know, two years ago, we had like a budget, $250 bucks a week for groceries. Now it's like $350 or $400. Fuel is way through the roof. Electricity's through the roof. Insurance is going up. Like, I think we've got to be sensitive to, we can't, I don't feel.
No, that's what we have to account for, what's real. I get that. But I don't want that mentality of another year, another 20% budget. If I get 10, I'm happy, good to go.
But I still think we make sure we.
Because, right, I agree, I understand. What we started, I mean, let's talk about the CEO. That's a perfect example, how we as a council start to look at what's going on in this town.
Right.
I don't recall my years on the council where the council has had that much input, or critique, or view, or opinions on the CEO. Never did, never did. Never really had to. I don't, I don't, maybe we did, but we never heard anything bad about it. But now we've actually taken the bull by the horns, and we're getting involved with it. And we're, and hopefully going to start getting involved with the assets, and looking at the buildings, and not waiting for, okay, department, they've given us information, we've got to start, we're starting to be proactive in that. And that's what, that's what I'd like to see.
So on the codes enforcement, like, you've been off and on the council over the years. We did have an intensive period in which we went through the codes enforcement. I actually pulled out things and have the past records. Some of the places are the same, and some are new, but it's something that you have to keep at each year. You know, and a part-time code officer who's learning the job is.
Right. It's just, it's just the fact that we have visibility, regular visibility, not with, not just through you, because that's the way it's set up. But to have the council once a month, or once every three months, let's have the code enforcement report. Never asked for that before.
Well, we actually did. Again, you've been off and off. We had the departments come in and do a report once or twice a year. We did that for several years. But then we were told we couldn't have the overtime, and because the department heads also get called out all the time, it ran into an issue of timing and cost and everything. So that sort of got cut out, just simply because of the cost of the department heads coming in.
But, right, no, I understand, but the awareness that the department, let's say the CEO, that function's going to change slightly, because he or she is expected to have a report ready, not only for the assets of the threat super, which will be you, but the council will be interested in what's going on too. I mean, the fact that Lindsay and I had talked about the format on how that's to be reported. It's just the visibility is becoming more, so we're asking more of the departments. Actually, not really asking more, we're just asking what should be done in the first place. They have to have accountability somehow. They have to be responsible for their people and their money, whether they have it written on a cocktail napkin, but they have to have accountability, and we're asking for views on that.
So it's gone back to the way it was previously before the last several years, which was a different viewpoint, which is fine.
Okay, well, I know you made your point, so I get that, but that to have.
Let's work on it, yeah.
I just have a couple of quick things. As you prepare to distribute your request to the department heads by the end of this week, have you already, is that all those packets already ready to go, or is it opportunity to add something when you deliver this to them?
I have it ready, but I have not printed it, so.
So one thing I'd like to see as we move forward, we know we've had serious vacancies this year. And so our percent overtime, which I have yet to see by department, like, an actual calculation of this. But I would ask, those tend to be the most costly things. What would be the department heads' plan for a reduction in their percent of overtime over the next year? Because that could be a real savings. I know that involves hiring people, which I did, isn't always possible, but goals, right, for the department? So as they prepare their department budgets and hand them to you, what would be nice that came along with that would be plans for reduction in overtime, working smarter, not harder? What are some efficiencies that you can realize within your department? So not like cutting supplies, but rather how can you, like, actually be, change your workflow? Have you realized that maybe we didn't need that third person, because we've been working for all these months without them? Like, are these cost savings that will, would be realized in 2022 and '23? Like, that's something I would ask everyone to really look at.
That sounds fine. And you'll get the percent of overtime once I get through the tax liens.
No, that's fine.
That has been difficult.
But I know that the department heads know that even better than you do, most likely, because they're working in the operations day-to-day, so they can usually realize efficiencies in their own departments faster than someone who's above them that doesn't understand the day-to-day operation quite as well. I'm not saying you don't, but every manager, if they're good at what they do, they can realize efficiencies in some way, potentially, you know, unless they're writing the most lean, amazing operation you ever saw in your life, and in which case I would leave them alone and give them a raise.
So as part of the budget, we can make custom budgets according to TRIO. Again, we can go back to what we used to do quite some time ago. And I had a budget that ran out of health insurance. I made one that ran out of overtime. So once the tax liens are straightened out and processed through, I have all the figures, but they're printing out irregularly, we'll say, and they're helping me with that. I can go in during the budget process and make the custom reports.
Okay, cool.
All right, Council. Anything else that you wanted to add in the discussion?
I have a comment, but not necessarily pertaining to this discussion, so I can either wait till the end.
Oh, we, yeah, let's go ahead and wait till the end, do a roundtable. I know, I know Rec was hoping to get full-time rec director instead of part-time. They're going to do what they have now. They have part-time, and they were looking to get. Yeah, two part-time.
A part-time rec director and an assistant.
Right, yeah. I think they were looking to get a full-time rec director, which, you know, something to think about anyway, whether it happens or not, I don't know.
Would that be a 30, 40 a week, 52 weeks a year?
Yeah. I think so, yeah. But I don't know.
I mean, it could develop into it if we had.
Yeah, I don't know if it's someone.
I'm not sure they're going to bring it forward for this year, but it's definitely in the air.
I know, it's in the conversation.
They want to improve that program, and in order to do so, you kind of have to make it a desirable.
I know, it's a super time, especially if they're doing it right, you know?
But, I mean.
And if you want to grow the program, it's trending in that direction.
We talked about a full-time rec director a number of years ago, because you could actually develop the programs and have them work on the social services and a whole variety of areas to cover it. It just was a funding issue.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about, so, yeah. That was, yeah, seriously.
Just as a quick tip, like, a little bit about that, Dexter has a full-time rec director. I mean, doesn't just handle like the sports stuff. He handles like community event plans. Like, it's very robust and actually kind of awesome. Like, he helps with all the different types of things that, like elderly programming, like, just, he's everywhere, and it's kind of cool. But I bet you it's because that's what he does every day, all day. And we just kind of piece it together, so it's a little more disjointed.
Yeah, so that, what I'm thinking is that program developed because there was somebody to invest the time in.
Yeah.
Exactly. And you can't get a tree unless you plant the seed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So let's go ahead and run the tables here. I'll start with you, Eric, if you wanted to.
No.
Add some track divide. All right. What's good? Jason?
I'm good.
Pete?
My comment?
Yeah.
The comment I have is along the lines of the tax-acquired property. Something that I think we should look at in possibly doing is when we own these properties before deeding them back, is there any obvious blatant code violations that we can tie to, that could be in condition of being deeded back to the, back to the people?
Right. That's a good idea. That is.
Yeah, the ones we're going to be deeding back.
So like this one coming up, has it been?
No, that one's, that one's good. It had a high value. And the next one does, but there's another one that's in an iffy position that might be beneficial to do that.
Because I mean, that puts us in our best position to try and take care of something like that. Or it just gets deeded right back to.
Yeah, Peltor may have, that's a perfect example of.
I'm going to have to stand up for a moment, and you'll lay quick here.
Peltor may have was that situation, you know?
I mean, it's a perfect opportunity while we have it.
Exactly.
To make it a condition before it gets deeded back.
Yeah, unfortunately, when we had the tax-acquired property and we sold it before, everybody went through on their plans and did what they said they were going to do, until we got to, just before the pandemic into 2019, and then people did not follow through on anything. So yes, it has to be a part of the conditions.
That was all.
And then go on.
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Nothing in particular beyond what we've talked about. I'm looking forward to taking some of this stuff and trying to fit it into buckets of like priorities, stuff that we want to do from a strategic plan, moving forward kind of perspective. Like, as I see these projects on this list, it's like, some of these fit into those bigger, higher, higher-arcing things we've been talking about for a few months, so it'd be nice to formalize that vision, so that as we work through this, we can say, well, this fits into our top three priorities. Let's move it here versus having it be like all over the map. Let's move it here versus having it be like all over the map. Anyway, that's my two cents, but.
Yeah, that goes back to comprehensive plan. We mentioned that, so what we're gonna do about this five years while it's in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Catherine, you kept a list of the priorities that we talked about.
Yes.
We, the, uh, four or five that we came up with briefly, just what we.
All right, I took notes on everything, so.
Just, just the bullet points. Do I know one was, uh, a RFP for the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, we have a RFP for the comprehensive plan, um, a possible RFP for building review. Uh, this would be structural. We would have, uh, the digitization as a information technology set up first, and then maybe a component for actual digitization, our part B. Um, we talked about the water sewer projects. Um, we also talked about the recreation planning.
Now, what we had, Eric had mentioned, brought up the, uh, RFP for the town valuation.
The assessing appraisal on RFP, full-time code officer.
Yeah.
Zero-based budgeting, and then the different types of reports that we wanted. There were several.
And the G I S stuff was already on there before or anything?
Already on there. And full-time rectorship was the last one, then.
Yeah.
Which is like a community services.
Yeah. So I don't really have anything else to add. Um, I just wanna make sure we're all set. I wanted, what I did mention before, um, I know it's not the easiest or the best reading, and I haven't read it for a long time, the comp plan. It's on the website. It's easy to find if there are government documents. So when you get to it between now and the next meeting, take a look at it, take notes on it if you wanna share with it, or, uh, you know, at least be ready to chat about if that's something you want to bring up, when we start this process. When is our next meeting, Catherine? Do we have a schedule set up for that?
We do have a schedule set up, so we made some changes when you weren't here. No, uh, we did a competition.
We're gonna get done for Halloween now? RFP, ready to go, buddy?
We took the three A and B and combined it and put some, uh, time limits on it, uh, extra meeting in there. And are going for, instead of, uh, before Thanksgiving, which everybody thought, or most people thought was too ambitious, to the late one, which we could have an issue, which did happen once. So we're back to the first meeting in, in December that we would approve the budget. So that would be December sixth.
Okay. So what, when's our next meeting?
So to get back to the next meeting, we need to put the budget together and do all the steps and everything. The finance committee will have a couple of meetings. So the first meeting of the town council is moved up. So it's ahead of any time it's ever been before. It'll be October eighteenth.
That's the first one, now the budget.
Yes. And then the finance committee will have one, and then they've got a couple of more strategic ones at different points.
Okay, so the first budget meeting we're gonna have officially will be October eighteenth.
Correct.
We're gonna have it all done and, uh, ready by December sixth?
It is to be ready by?
Said December sixth.
Oh, yes, the whole thing, yeah, yeah, December.
Okay, so October eighteenth to December sixth.
Who's the finance committee? Sorry, who's the finance committee? I should probably know this, but I don't.
It's me, Brendan Craig.
Oh, okay.
So our next, uh, regular council meeting is September six.
September sixth?
Six, right after Labor Day. Okay. So that's all. I think we, we're all set. Any, uh, final closing thoughts, anybody? All right, very good. I'll look for a motion for a German.
I'll make a motion again.
Second.
Move to second, we are German. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Good meeting. Yeah, here's Vince.
What was the, um, is it Peter?
Yeah.
What was his class that he taught? He said you guys were his students.